To rise for the invocation and the pledges. Pastor Neil Winchester from Believe Church is here. Thank you for being here, Pastor. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
All right, let's pray. Well, Lord, we're told in your word that we are to have the same mind in us that was also in you. For you came to this world, Lord, not to be served, but to serve and to give your life a ransom for many. So in the same way, God, we pray that this court have your heart and your mind today, led by your Spirit, so that everything that is said and done here today be ultimately for the good of your people and the glory of your name. We pray this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have all commissioners present. It is Wednesday, October 16th. We are at the Noasis County courtroom, 901 Leopard. And it is 9:11. I will call this meeting to order. Next agenda item, do we have any disclosures of conflicts of interest from anyone? If you have one later and need to bring it up, you can when the item is brought up. Item E then, adopt the following resolutions, proclamations and/or orders. Item number one, discuss and consider adopting a resolution designating the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence and Prevention Month and related matters. Sorry. Peyton, you're going to read that? Sorry?
Whereas the impact of domestic violence extends beyond the immediate victims and survivors affecting children, families, and the community as a whole, with long-term consequences on physical and mental health, economic stability, and overall well-being. Whereas domestic violence-related homicides and injuries are preventable when communities take action to support survivors, hold abusers accountable, and provide access to essential services such as emergency shelter, legal assistance, counseling, and advocacy. Whereas National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, observed each October, provides an opportunity for individuals, communities, and government entities to join together to promote awareness, support survivors, and work towards the eradication of domestic violence. Therefore, Noasis County Commissioners Court joins the Noasis County Attorney's Office in encouraging solidarity with survivors of domestic violence and reaffirms its commitment to ensuring that our community is a safe place for all residents by extending support, resources, and advocacy to all survivors. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Commissioners Court of Noasis County does hereby formally designate the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, duly adopted by the vote of Commissioners Court of Noasis County, Texas on the 16th day of October 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I understand we have some folks from the Purple Door here. Yes, and Jenny put this on. Are you going to speak too? Sorry. The county attorney. Sorry. Come on.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. This is an important part of the function of the county attorney's office. We are very, very glad and honored to be able to bring this to the court today in conjunction with the representatives from the Purple Door. I also have Marcia Pettis in our office here. And before I turn it over, I want to thank our partners in this very important mission that we all have. And we were talking in the office today, and people were saying, oh, happy this and that. And what I think you have to have to understand is you cannot buy, you cannot pay a salary to anybody for them to wake up every day and come and deal with people who are in the very worst parts of their lives and to do it with the compassion that we are. I'm so proud of our team, able to share and show people victims of domestic violence. So I'm so proud to be here with you all today and especially thank CCPD for all the work and the advocates as we see them bringing people every day, calling on special matters. It's a joy. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Radcliffe with the Purple Door. I actually am the supervisor for the non-residential program. And again, thanks Jenny for coming, for inviting us and being part of this. We couldn't do our work without them as part of protection, but we're here to help our community in our 12 counties. Kristin is here. She's our advocate in Corpus. So she's here to help people and to move and to help them go from where they are to where they want to be, whether it's our shelter or staying in your home and having her help you through that process. So thank you so much for recognizing this and thank you so much for bringing this attention to the county. It's a very important issue.
Thank you all so much for what you do, by all means. Yes. Is, are you going to speak too, Marcia, or anybody else? We have a resolution for y'all somewhere. I don't know where it is. I don't have it. Do you have them? Somebody had them and they got left somewhere, but we'd like to do a photo with you if you would too, please. Yes. This is such an important organization, and we appreciate everything you do and we appreciate our county office for the work they do as well, so.
They could do it.
Yes. Somebody wanted to go get those, so we'll have them in a minute. All right.
One second. Hang on.
You're waiting on me. Too short anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do one of y'all have them? They go, we're supposed to find them.
Good work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Miss King has it. She's going to go get it. Okay. Before y'all leave, just you wait outside. I think she's going to bring it to you.
We'll do.
Yes, thank you so much.
Sorry about that, Judge.
That's okay. I mean, we're just looking for it. I didn't know. I've had a morning. It could have been on my desk, too.
It's here?
Francis, is that it? They went outside, I think, to. Oh, they need signatures, so. The third one, you signed the other two. Yes. Looks like this has been a morning for everybody. Wait so you can take it out to them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to item F. In recognition of the inaugural London Athletics Hall of Fame inductees, Precinct 4, Commissioner Chesney, you put this on as.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to read that, too.
Yes.
Commissioners Court Resolution in recognition of the inaugural London Athletics Hall of Fame inductees, whereas the inaugural London Athletics Hall of Fame inductees consists of Chris Gray, 2015 Track and Field, Mary Kate Williams, 2015 Volleyball, Jake Boss, 2016 Football, Jalen Lawver, 2016 Basketball, Dylan Humpel, 2017 Tennis, Taylor Boss, 2019 Volleyball, Grant Glasson, 2019 Basketball, Sarah Humpel, 2019 Tennis, Cameron Ralston, 2020 Football, Angela Torres, 2020 Soccer, Ty Leonard, 2021 Football, Joshua Chesney, 2021 Basketball, John Martinez, 2021 Baseball, Dany Casonetta, 2021 Track and Field, Carabucy, 2021 Volleyball, Ashley Line, 2021 Volleyball, Honorary Inductee, Honorary Inductee, Dr. David Freeman, London ISD Superintendent from 2014 to 2019, and Robert Moreno, longtime Athletic Director of London ISD. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Noasis County, does hereby recognize the accomplishments of the inaugural London Athletics Hall of Fame inductees and congratulates them on their achievements, duly adopted by the vote of the Commissioners Court of Noasis County, Texas on this, the 16th day of October 2024. And I would move passage.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Do we have any of those people here?
No, it was just a.
Then moving on to item number two, in recognition of the 2024 WB Ray High School Athletics Hall of Fame. And Emily is going to read that one.
Whereas Mr. David Hastings, class of 1976, will be recognized for his successful role on the Ray High School football team. Mr. Hastings was the place kicker for the Texans throughout his high school career and contributed to the 1975 undefeated 4A District Championship with a game-winning field goal. After high school, David graduated from the University of Texas at Austin with a BS in education. Ms. Catherine Marie Rogers, class of 1997, will be recognized for her amazing career on the Texans tennis team. Catherine was responsible for the 1995 and 1996 District Championship for the Texans. She also competed in the United States Tennis Association's tournaments, where she ranked in the top 15 in the state of Texas as a super champion player. Due to her amazing career in tennis, she is now one of the managers for the Community Services Department at the UTSA Texas, where she worked closely with community tennis associations. Whereas Mr. John Mack White, class of 1958, will be recognized for his outstanding tennis career. Mr. White competed in the UIL State semifinals his junior year and later was the 1958 UIL State Champion his senior year. With a full scholarship to the University of Texas at Austin, Mack was an All-American and captain of the Longhorns, as well as Southwestern Conference Champion. After graduation, Mack was a regular on the professional tennis circuit, becoming a nationally-ranked tennis player. He also achieved his dream of playing in the U.S. Open Tennis Championship. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of the Noasis County, does hereby recognize the accomplishments of the 2024 WB Ray High School Athletics Hall of Fame inductees and congratulates them on their achievements, duly adopted by vote of the Commissioners Court of Noasis County, Texas, on this, the 16th day of October 2024.
Thank you, Emily.
Move passage, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very, and congratulations to both of those groups. And moving on to public comment, I don't see anyone signed up for public comment today. If you didn't have an opportunity to sign up and you wish to do so now, this would be the time to do so. There being none, I'll move on to our consent agenda. Does any commissioner have any item on the consent agenda they wish to pull for further discussion?
Who's W?
W?
Judge, I'd make a motion to pass all consent agenda items, but item W.
We have a motion and a second to pass all consent agenda items except W. All those in favor say. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I have a question on K.
K, W and K, would you change your motion?
That would be my motion.
Yes. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. On item K comes up first, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to know, have we got any applications or have we announced the job?
The job was already posted. I was offered the position of interim county auditor, and I accept it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I will be finishing out the remainder of Dale's term, and then I will be eligible to be appointed as county auditor, should the Board of Judges so choose.
I was wondering, was there any other applicants?
I believe.
That is the Board of Judges. They're the ones that interviewed and accepted the applications and stuff. We didn't have a voter. Yeah.
But he just wanted to know there are other applicants.
There were some other applicants, and they interviewed one other person. One person withdrew after they turned in their application. That was it. Yes.
I'm satisfied. That's good. Congratulations.
But, and I meant to bring that up as well, so we all want to congratulate you on the interim position and being appointed. And I meant to pull that one myself. Thank you, Commissioner, for doing that. But they, we are excited and look forward to working with you and hope things move right along and that you will work with our offices as well, just as you have been in the past. So thank you very much for accepting the position.
Thank you. I look forward to working with everyone.
Congratulations, but I think this is, what, a six-months' term?
Yes. Well, it's finishing out the unexpired term of Dale. I'm not sure if it comes up in February or March. Do you know when it does?
It's April, his terms through April 15th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We have.
Move passage, Judge. Oh, sorry. My bad.
Yes, move passage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The two people online with your hand up, is that on this item or?
Public comment, probably, Judge.
Probably public comment. We've passed that position, so.
We can go.
All right. Then moving on to item W.
The reason I pulled W, I just wanted to clarification. I think I have repeatedly asked, when we list the hangers and the, we always put the amount, what to rent it for. And we got all of them here, but there's no amount. So I think I've requested that several times already so we'll know what we're doing, what we're renting, and how much. So I'd like Brett to come back at the next meeting to let us know what every.
Is that included in the backup, Teresa, in any of these? I don't see it.
I didn't see no backup on it.
Well, the hangar lease agreements are attached, but it's not itemized to show the individual lease amounts.
It doesn't have the amounts, and we've asked, I know you've asked for that before, so, yes. Do you want to table it to the next meeting to ask him to bring that back?
Second.
So that would be your motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to our regular agenda item, I believe.
I want to table 3A 15.
3A 15?
November 13th.
Okay, let's do that, our table, because there's a couple more on here, too, to the November 2nd. Thank you.
13, no?
13.
15.
15. 13, 15, what are you saying?
November 13th.
13. Table to November.
13, our next meeting.
November 13th. The 13th item table to the November 13th meeting.
Judge, if we're.
Item 15. Item 15 table to November 13th.
Well, that's what I said. I thought you'll just correct me and said, no, 13.
13th is the meeting.
Yes, okay. Item 15, I'm going to ask, I have another table. I'm going to ask.
Wait, do we need, do we vote on that?
I thought we already did.
November 13th is the next meeting. He's motioned to table item 15th until November 13th.
Okay.
And that was second, and I don't think we voted.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. I would also ask you, Commissioner Chesney, to table your item number 16. I believe we have a couple of things missing. We should have an accurate amount and a project to allocate to, so.
You're right, Judge.
Yes.
Accept your motion to table and second that motion until November 13th also.
There was two.
That's number 16.
Number 16. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yeah, it wasn't, I didn't get what I needed to.
It didn't have the stuff. There was another.
Judge, I have one, I was wanting to table. I don't have any backup on item number six, which is the discuss and consider game room policy. And based on our policy, with no backup provided in here that I've got, I wouldn't like to make a motion to table that item until November 13th.
I'll second that motion.
Number six. Yes, sir.
Item number six, on the game room policy, there's no backup.
It was just going to be a simple motion. Does that still need backup?
Everything has to have something used.
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, Priscilla's out, so we didn't get it added, so.
We have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. I had two from the auditor's office.
Can we, just formality, can we reopen public comment and let them speak on public comment? I'm not going to do the.
They're going to talk on an agenda item. They're on an agenda item, too, that's coming up.
Item two?
Yeah, problem.
I'm just saying, can we let them speak in public comment? We're not going to do this one here. You know, let them, we're going to table. I'm just saying, can we, they were waiting for the item, so can we go back and allow them to speak?
Are there any other items we're going to table, though?
Yes, I have some more that I need to table right now first. Yes, let's finish the tabling, and then I'll open public comment back up.
Yeah.
Item D1 and D2, the auditor's office has asked me to table to the November 13th meeting. D1, they want to clarify some things on the report and get us a fresh report. I would make the motion table to November 13th.
Second, Judge.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then D2, I believe this here states for a three-year contract, they'd like to go back and try to change this to a one-year contract, I understand. They want to bring it back November 13th as well. So I'll make the motion. I don't know if you could do them both together, you also.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I make the motion. We have a second. Commissioner Chesney, I believe, made that.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other tabled items that we have?
Oh, Judge number nine, I'd like to ask if we have to do that today, because I haven't really had.
I didn't plan to do that. I just want to discuss what our process is going to be and show the names, but I was going to bring that back, but I'd like us to discuss some things on it and look at it first, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. But we aren't going to vote on that if anyone is here waiting for that.
What's the timeframe on that, Judge?
We, I called and checked. We can do it on the November 13th, November 29th it has to. You're required, because of the size, we have to vote two meetings afterwards, and I did check, we're okay doing it on the 13th.
And that's the new process where we have to allocate certain votes?
Yes, yes.
All of them or part?
Yeah, and I just.
I don't think we're ready to do that, but I think we need to vote or discuss a process that we can move forward on, so.
Another wonderful legislative change.
Yes, yes. So are there any other tabled items that we want to do? There being none, if you're here, would like to resubmit or speak on public comment because your item got tabled, you're welcome to speak. Your three minutes, please state your name and address, and I will keep a list and give you the opportunity to speak. You have three minutes. You know we cannot respond.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Honorable Judge Connie Scott. So it's a pleasure to see you. Hope your family and grandchildren are doing well. Commissioners, for those running for office, I won't, they always say, wish you the best of luck. I say, I wish that you work, continue to work hard on your campaigns so you'll come back and serve the community. I just wanted, just Rolando Garza, Highway Village, Annabell, Texas. Another game room issue's been, I would say, they, it's become a little bit controversial, maybe convoluted with some of the regulations that they, when they did the, when you did your policy here, regulating game rooms. You know, I talked to some of my friends, they're ex-retired DPS troopers, investigators for DPS, a lot of law enforcement, Bear County law enforcement, and they do a lot of security for game rooms in San Antonio. So I asked him, I gave him like a comparison, what's going on here compared to what's going on in San Antonio? And there's a lot of logistical things that go, that they worked on in San Antonio. And I know that in my advocacy, my years of advocacy, 34 years of advocacy, normally we pulled like a template from other cities where things are working. Maybe it's to, maybe it's to build an arena, or to build a, build a facility, or to implement a policy, or a law, or ordinance. And we took them as, we took other policies from other communities, such as Bear County and the game room deal. And I know y'all are pretty smart cats up there. And I just, so I talked to my friends up there, and I was saying, well, we're doing the security. We're retired DPS and law enforcement. We're doing, I said, well, how many, do y'all have a lot of problems? No, for the most part, he goes, they run pretty smooth. And I take it to credit because these guys served 35 to 40 years in law enforcement at the state and local level. And I said, so what is the difference? Why are we having so many problems in corporate security? He goes, it's the way they designed the out, the policies regulating game rooms. He goes, and it doesn't mean that when you, when you go back and discuss and alter or modify that policy, it doesn't mean that law enforcement doesn't have the right to go in there and continue to enforce the laws to make sure they're being run right. Because that's what we're doing in San Antonio. We allow law enforcement access to do their jobs against illegal activity in game rooms, but we don't put parameters that will block and shut down local businessmen who already invest in hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's up to them, because they are, the buck stops with the owners, that they're running illegally, that they run legally, efficiently, and properly according to your regulations. If they don't, then law enforcement has the right to step in and do what they have to do. Is that right? Correct? We agree? So I don't think that the game owners are saying that they don't, that they don't want law enforcement in there or anything like that. They have the right to go in there and make sure that they're following your guidelines and playing by the rules. And San Antonio is, it works fine. They have over 200.
Your time's run out.
Okay, thank you, Judge. They have, just let me finish with this. They have over 200 game rooms operated in San Antonio, and they don't have the same problems that we have here. So if you just take the time to, we look at it on the 13th, and I'll see you on the 13th.
Thank you.
God bless you. Have a good week. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak on this behalf on the game rooms. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Rolando Garza. My name is Joe Ortiz. I live at 3718 Mendenhall. But I agree with Mr. Rolando Garza. We're not asking that law enforcement not go and regulate this deal. My, our deal is the way the permits are issued. You know, why, why is there a redundancy when you have city CFO certificates of occupants, and then you need another one from the county? Well, you know, they're too strict, the county's too strict that they're, that's why you have illegal game room, because they cannot get a game, a game room permit, you know, so they decide to go under the, under the flag, you know. And I ask that you revisit and establish some type of legal way of getting the owners a permit to operate. They're not illegal. The game rooms are not illegal. Gambling is, but not the game room. Like Mr. Rolando said, if law enforcement thinks that they're doing something wrong, hey, go after them, but, you know, nobody's telling you not to get, not to get the law enforcement involved. We need that. But the way that the procedures that you all implemented on giving out a permit to a game room owner is ridiculous. You know, 1,500 linear feet from a residential area, that's five times more than where you sell liquor or from a bar or from a strip joint. There's no way that some game room owner can operate with those stringent rules. Like Mr. Rolando Garza says, why is it that San Antonio and the Valley are operating properly and not here in Nueces County? I think, I think you all need to revisit, get a citizens advisory board, like the city has the, uh, a planning commission, you know? That you have to go through them to get a permit. Well, why can't we establish, why can't the county establish something like that? And, and to give us a chance to, for, for owners to operate? Again, uh, and I've, I've heard, I'm not sure, but I've heard that there's already several lawsuits already going after the county for, for doing, uh, those stringent rules to, to the game room owners. Uh, it's targeting, you're targeting the game rooms, targeting, it's illegal, as you all know, we can't do that. So, I'm hoping that you can, uh, or will revisit this ordinance and, and make it a lot simpler to get a permit to the game room owner so they won't have to operate illegally. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Leinberger, if you want to speak now?
Please unmute.
You need to unmute. Can you un, unmute your microphone, Mr. Leinberger?
You need to unmute, sir.
We can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, Jeff Leinberger, eleven Renosas, San Antonio, Texas, this is Agenda Item Three A eleven, it's a dune permit application. Uh, I just wanted to indicate a few comments here. I reviewed it, and the permit application itself does not contain, uh, a set of stormwater drainage plans. And so therefore, there's no way that I can assess, uh, uh, that it has any kind of reasonable drainage analysis, or any kind of structural measures that would address the control of stormwater drainage, uh, due to the construction that it proposes. Doesn't indicate any safely, uh, any safe, uh, uh, safety measures that would be, need to be taken to prevent impacting by flood the adjacent properties, uh, when the dunes are impacted or removed. Uh, doesn't indicate, uh, the way that the construction or the mitigation is gonna prevent flooding of the lots, or the wetlands, or the ponds that are directly adjacent to the proposed construction. Doesn't indicate, uh, any kind of prevention or control of windborne transportation of sand due to the construction, or any kind of mitigation measures. Doesn't indicate any kind of prevention or control of waterborne erosion and scour of the dune sand when the dunes are removed, uh, and those resulting impacts to the, to the adjacent properties, adjacent lots. Doesn't indicate how it's gonna prevent any kind of control of the waterborne, the waterborne sedimentation of the dune sand, uh, due to the removal of the dunes, or mitigation of the dunes. And one other item that it doesn't indicate, because it doesn't have sufficient information, no plans, no, no design indications of what is going to happen. It doesn't show how the dune permit or mitigation is going to ensure that the ground-bearing soil capacities of the adjacent lots are not diminished or emasculated, altered or, or even undermined due to the proposed construction or removal of, at these massive twenty-foot dunes that are adjacent to our properties. Uh, and of course, that removal would indicate some sort of excavation or earth-moving, uh, operations that create tremendous vibration that would run the possibility of, of, uh, impacting, you know, the foundations and, and the structures that are adjacent to the, to the proposed construction. And it's for these reasons that I laid out.
Mr. Leinberger, you've run out of time as well.
Permit, the dune permit should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on public comment?
She does too, Judge.
Oh, Samira, I'm sorry, I didn't see, your hand was up earlier and then it went down. You can go, please, yes.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Um, there's one point that I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, one oh-nine Mustang Island Estates, Corpus Christi, Texas, and I'm Samira Leinberger. Um, one thing I wanted to make clear from what hap, was mentioned in the last meeting is that the proposed location of the road right now was not there since the nineteen-seventies. I was able to confirm this with Jeffrey Edmonds, the Director of Engineering. What happened was when the land was acquired in the nineteen-seventies, it had an access easement that was nine hundred feet south of the current proposed location. Um, then in nineteen-twenty, I mean, in, in two thousand twenty-one, there was a proposal to shift the alignment, as the verbiage has been used. Uh, the, the verbiage shift the alignment seems to imply some minor tweaking. This is not minor, this is a movement of the route, of the road north nine hundred feet, and it, it moves it from a location where the dunes that would have been disturbed were like from six to nine feet, to a location where they're twenty feet. So it is not just a shift in alignment, is a misnomer in my view, maybe it's a term of, uh, you know, industry, but to me, this is not a shift, this is a movement of the road. So, fine, uh, nobody is opposing the building of an access road. We're worried about public safety, we want that to be addressed, we want the public to be able to get emergency vehicles and things like that, that's fine. But why would you shift it to a place where it's much harder to remediate, uh, could cause much more destruction to the public by removing these barriers, these twenty-foot barriers? Mother Nature has indicated the location, the best location is where it was pre, where it has been since, um, since the seventies, which is, we have fifty years to show that this, the location it was originally at, at the access easement, was a better location because of the size of the dunes there. Here we have to do a lot more disruption. Um, there is no provisions in here that address, when you elevate a road, from what I understand, they're planning to put the road up higher twelve feet, now not only are you removing the buffer of the twenty-foot dunes and then trying to rebuild it, you are removing, you are creating a drainage problem into the, uh, the sides, on the side, the north and su, um, south bound, the boundaries, not just from the east where the, where waves would come in. So now every time it rains, we're gonna have this pooling of water coming off the road into the lots. And there is nothing in this dune permit that addresses how they're gonna move that. If you don't address the specifics of how you're going to remediate those problems, then there's no way to enforce it, because how are you gonna say that it requires somebody to sue because now you've done this construction, and now you have flooding the lots from the, my lots getting flooded, let's say from the.
Your time has run out as well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but yes, your time has run out, thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak or online that I missed earlier? If not, we will move forward on our agenda. Please, go here. Um, on regular Agenda A one, discuss and consider authorizing the approval of escrow amendment conditions letter agreement between the Nueces County Hospital District and Kristus Bond Health System. Thank you, Mr. Hip, for being here this morning.
Uh, good morning, Judge and Commissioners, it's a beautiful day out there, the, uh, the front felt good, hopefully it's a signal of better weather to come. Commissioners, the hospital district is bringing to you an amendment today to, uh, our agreements with SPON. Uh, we bring these because the county is a signatory to, to the agreements we have with them. We don't amend them often, but we do have an amendment here today. I also have with me Adam Robinson, who's our outside counsel from King and Spalding, and he is here to answer any legal questions and stuff you have. So, Commissioners, essentially this, uh, escrow amendment sets four conditions for the hospital district to distribute the remaining part of the escrow funds. Um, you may recall, or you may not, because you weren't here, Judge, but, uh, back in twenty-fifteen, when the hospital district and SPON agreed to a series of things, among them was moving the residency programs from Memorial to Shoreline, uh, there were several other things, including in the end, the demolition of Memorial. And to assure that those things occurred, the hospital district required SPON to put money in escrow. And then each time they checked off one of those things on the list, so to say, uh, they were approved for a disbursement from the escrow account. And so, uh, the escrow account has worked to assure, uh, that the things that we agreed to happen. So we're down to the last item, and the last item had to do with, in part, the demolition of Memorial, and then also the imposition, if you will, of a green space on the Memorial site. And so, um, in, in terms of working toward that last condition and authorizing an escrow, uh, the hospital district approached SPON, uh, about some conditions that we would like to have in addition to the agreement that addressed how the money would be dispersed. And so the four things that we approach, actually we approached them with, with many things, but the four things that, that we settled on are addressed in the letter that's in your packet, and there are items, uh, one through four, that start on the first page and end on the second. So, in short, uh, these four items, the first item allows the hospital district to have its properties back while the lease is still going on. And so what I mean by that is that the hospital district, under this agreement, could ask for our properties back at any time. Uh, there are a few restrictions that SPON imposed sort of on that. They would like for the properties not to be used for healthcare, but they can be used for other things, for at least the term of the lease. And so anyway, the point of this, this one, without getting too, too far off the trail here, is for the hospital district to have the opportunity to ask for its properties back. Now, the properties, these would be the properties that do not have a clinic on them, so that would be the memorial space, uh, the parking lots around there, uh, the properties that we picked up through tax deeds and stuff around town, and so we would, we would basically take those back. Uh, Items two and three had to do with SPON helping us identify, uh, people, mostly consultants, that could, uh, help us work on, uh, a health needs analysis of, of what's needed in the community. Uh, and then number three would be for them to identify to us of some facilities or companies that we might approach about the, uh, a facility plan for the Memorial campus. And so, moving on to number four, and probably, uh, the most important one, is that the number four, and this actually came into the scene while we were still negotiating with SPON about these amendments, uh, but number four, uh, requires SPON to use their good faith and best efforts to help the hospital district identify, uh, additional financial support for the residency programs. And so, um, the, of the words of, of good faith and best efforts have some legal connotation, and so we, we believe those, those are good, strong words, and SPON has agreed to, to work with us on, uh, finding funding for those programs. So your approval today would, would approve, uh, these four, uh, conditions that we have to disbursement of the escrow, uh, and then thereby, when you approve these, it sets in motion, uh, three or four other amendments that are more detailed and technical than, than the purposes to discuss here, uh, but that would be mainly to address the fact that SPON would relinquish its properties to us when we ask for them.
Judge, any legal questions on this? I'd like to take it into executive session.
Oh, in executive?
Yep.
Um, any other questions that anyone has that you want to bring up now? Has SPON, are they aware of this, and have they agreed to this temporarily, right now?
Uh, yes, ma'am, they have. Uh, as soon as we get through all the approval process, we'll get the signatures and stuff on here, uh, but they are in agreement with this, yes.
Um, I will pull this into executive and we'll bring it back afterwards for Commissioner Chesney's legal questions that he wants answered.
Okay, Judge, do you need our counsel in that meeting?
I don't think he can be in there.
I don't think so, I don't think, yeah, I think we're good.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On these issues here, Mr. Hip is, basically, there's, we're talking about where monies can be distributed, right? That they would tell you or hospital district where to put the money, but only to the properties that they have, that we can, the hospital district can recover those properties back, but you cannot use it for, uh, other, uh, medical facilities that will compete against SPON, I guess, right?
Uh, Commissioner, well, first of all, on the money question, uh, the only monies in question here are, are disbursement of the final escrow payment.
How much is that?
Uh, and, and so these, these conditions we put out there before that. So, i- if the conditions are satisfied, the court agrees, then we'll go ahead and do the disbursement. So as far as the services for the property, uh, for the public's benefit, the memorial property has a covenant on it, uh, that was instilled by the Baptist Foundation that says that it can only use, originally it was for hospital purposes, and then we amended it to be for healthcare purposes. So, the restrictions that SPON, uh, wants to put on the properties, uh, would, uh, limit the kinds of, you're correct, limit the kinds of facilities that are put on there. So they would be things that would, um, not compete with them. So there wouldn't be a clinic, there wouldn't be an ambulatory surgery center, uh, there wouldn't be another hospital, uh, but there are, are things on there, there can be an FQHC, uh, like there is with Amistad, and there can be other things, and, and those are embedded in the agreement about what they can be used for. And the limitations they ask to be imposed on there would only be for the life of the remaining years in the lease, and the, our, our, our lease in the background was SPON, and that goes until twenty thirty-six. So, uh, it has some limitations, it's, it's, um, it's not unduly restrictive, but it's not unusual that they ask for them.
So really, right now, we're, they're asking just for the balance of the escrow? That's what they're asking for?
Uh, yes, they're, they're entitled to a payment of the last escrow payment, conditioned upon these four things in the letter.
Ask him again how much it is.
Do we know how much it's in the escrow?
It's, it's around three million.
It's a lot.
Okay, well, that, but that's their money that they put into escrow.
Correct.
Right, but, I mean, do you have a legal question, Commissioner, a legal question?
Yeah, I got legal.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind moving forward, but.
He has a legal, I didn't mind moving forward, but he has a legal question, so we'll just take it into executive and bring it back afterwards, so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for being here, both of you. Um, I've been asked to bring up Item Three A eleven and twelve, if we could, on these, I think eleven is the one you asked for. Um, discuss and consider approval of the large-scale request and exemption request for dune protection permit for construction of new beach access road seaward of the three-hundred-and-fifty-foot dune protection line.
Three eleven?
I think the city is here, is why we're, I mean, we just don't want to keep them sitting here waiting, so yes, Item Three A eleven, we're on.
Uh, good morning, Judge and Commissioners, this item is to request for dune protection permit for construction of new beach access road seawards of the three-fifty dune prote, uh, protection line. This item was, this item was previously presented on October second and was tabled to meet with the adjacent residents, and city has made several efforts to meet with the residents with no luck. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer you those questions.
Yeah, if you could address, and Christine, are you here too? If y'all could address, is there anything else administratively that's needed for this dune permit to be approved, or is it all in administrative order and ready to move forward?
Yes, it is in administrative order and complete. Um, we had tabled it last time by your request to give the adjacent landowners more time to review the information, uh, not because it was incomplete or anything was done incorrectly. So they were given additional time, and they have commented here again before.
Can you pull your mic up just a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
It's hard to hear. And so, um, the dune permit is administratively correct, all the things that have been done, that what we do to issue a dune permit is done, they don't like where the road is, that's a fight with them and the city, is, is my understanding, they can go do that later if they're uncomfortable with drainage plans. And think, that has nothing to do with why, when we do a, a dune permit.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Explain that a little bit, because some of those comments were, were valid, but not pertinent to this process.
Yeah, more in their line, yeah. So the, uh, the project did go to BMAC, and they reviewed it, had comments, the applicant revised, uh, the city, and their engineer revised the application and brought it back to another BMAC. It was reviewed and only needed some minor corrections, and they requested it only be sent to Cliff, the BMAC chair, for final review after those minor corrections were done. He reviewed that third, um, iteration, and he gave it the okay, and we sent our, uh, his memo was then sent to the judge for her review, and she sent her review to the GLO. The GLO took their time commenting and, and had, um, some recommendations that would be included in the approval letter from the county, um, after we got their letter back. And we have followed the allotted amount of time, adjacent landowner notifications were sent, uh, by certified letter, and that's all in the administrative record. Uh, so all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
So, some of the things that the people earlier were commenting on would be more to have discussions with the city later down the road. We don't deal at dune permit level with all, many of the things she discussed earlier, or he discussed earlier, correct?
Yeah, I did, I provided some information to Judy Wallace about that, because I said that some of that, she should, uh, follow up with the city about, um, the, uh, erosion and stormwater flow and how the water would be transferred, especially into, um, uh, impacts if it increases the amount of water in the ditch, well, that's text dots jurisdiction, and they, um, would review and see if there's enough capacity for any additional stormwater for any additional stormwater. If it does cause that in the ditch, that's a different process they go through with them. So there are other more technical reviews that go on at the city and through TechDOT for a lot of the issues.
Right, so again, the issues that the gentleman brought up, while maybe valid, and I don't know if they're right or wrong, they're not applicable for the dune permit process that we're currently in. We tried to explain that to them in emails and I know the city's met with them. And so I just want to reiterate again that all the concerns that Mr. Leinberger relayed earlier are ones that he needs to take to the city. That is not, we don't do that at dune permitting. We have a limited amount of ability and process of which we have followed and it's a very detailed process. It goes to the BMAC, which is a very environmentally conscious committee. It then goes to the GLO for comment. They make comment and say, this is what we prefer. The judge is involved in it. Everything that the BMAC and the GLO put into, into comments is part of this permit, correct?
Correct, yes. So, yes, you are correct. It is per the dune permit, the questions he's asked are beyond the scope of the dune permit.
Right, the county has done its job. The permit is applicable. The permit has had all i's dotted and t's crossed. The, the areas that they're concerned about are not applicable to a dune permit. That's where you gotta go fight with the city over it on the drainage and the, all the issues that are very valid, again, that he brings up, that, but that's not, we have no ability to regulate any of that at the dune permitting process.
Correct.
Okay, to make sure everybody's clear, I know we've said it repeatedly over and over and I get that they don't like some of the things and they'll have that opportunity to go fight that to the city, but it's not at the county. The dune permit process has been followed to the T and we gave them two more weeks to go back and look at this, to make sure the dune permit was, was accurate. And there's been nothing presented that says the dune permit's not accurate or we hadn't followed those procedures. So Judge, I would make a motion that we pass this permit and let them go fight with the city where is the appropriate place to fight.
I'll, I'll second the motion, but Ms. Leinberger, you have your hand up to, if you have a question you need to ask us or something?
Well, I would like to say something. I did try multiple times to have a conversation so that I could clarify some of these issues. I also explained that the two weeks that we were given was extremely still limited. I appreciate it, but under circumstances that I was facing, it was just extremely limited, my ability to do much with this. I think a phone call would be helpful when it clears up things like this procedure here is going to be addressed at a future meeting. I have questions in my mind, will I be notified of who I'm going to be meeting with to discuss the concerns that we have about the actual location and, you know, he's saying it's not part of the permit, but to me, the permit is part of the plans. If that's not the case, then a phone call could have cleared that up. And if that, if that is the case, that we have an opportunity to address these things with somebody, then who is it and will I be given notice?
Ms. Leinberger, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm...
The phone call could do better than an email.
Well, but I disagree because I put things in emails because there's always he said, she said. I clearly sent you at least three emails explaining this process to you very clearly. I put you in contact with the people at the city. You just don't want to hear what I've had to tell you, which is, it's the city's fight. Hold on, hold on, I let you speak, hold on, I let you speak, so let me finish and you can rebut me. You have not, I have sent you email after email regarding exactly what this is. This is a dune permit. We don't have jurisdiction to do the things that you want to fight over. I have said that I will show you those emails again. I've put you in contact with the people. You know exactly who you now have to contact with the city because I put you in contact with those folks at the city. I was the one who connected you with Jeff Edmonds and the, I'm sorry, I can't say the lady's name here today, I apologize.
I'm Ratna Portomoto.
I apologize for that. So, so to say that you were not, to say that you have not been informed is inaccurate, that you now know exact... No, ma'am, let me finish, then you can talk. I didn't interrupt you when you spoke. So please let me finish because I am very frustrated with you in this process because I believe this is an attempt to stall something that we are not going to stall because we have done our part. The part now that you are worried about and your husband made very valid points need to be made to the city of Corpus Christi. The lady is here, they know to notify you, the city is here, they will notify you. If they don't, you now have their contact information. Do you know when this will be heard once we do this? Let's get it out in the open because I am tired of hearing that they don't know about this. So do you know when this is going to be discussed?
Yes, sir. The next steps are to get the UTP amendment done, so which is gonna happen in the next two, three months. I will reach out to Ms. Leinberger and then make sure that she understands what we are doing.
Okay, will you copy me so that I don't hear from someone that they didn't get noticed? I want to know that they have every opportunity to go fight what may be very, very valid concerns that aren't the place to fight at Nuones County, they are the fight at city of Corpus Christi. So that are, those are, they may have the most valid points in the world and I hope you'll take them seriously. But I'm gonna say again, for the sixth time, those are not concerns that this county, Nuones County can do. We have done what we're supposed to do. Now it's up to the city and I hope you'll take their concerns, you know, seriously because the drainage and the impact on the dunes and all those things, and, and the impact on the drainage and all the things that they're talking about, those may be very valid. So please copy me when you set something up with them so that I know what has gone on here because we have given these people every courtesy we can. We delayed it before when it was completely right the first time, but we delayed it and gave them two more weeks and they wanted another month and I said, no, this is totally me. I said, no, we're not delaying this another month because there's no reason that, you need to go fight at the city and they haven't heard that. So give me your word, I know Neiman was here earlier too, make sure that they are reached out to and notified, please, so that they can come fight and give them plenty of notice, like give them two, three weeks, I don't, whatever they need to come do it because they're out of town, please give them all the notice they need. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Leinberger, I think we muted you, but I think it's clear that we are instructing them and we appreciate the communication back and forth and they have made it clear in here that you're going to be notified when you can take this up with the city.
Yeah, yes, and I would like to thank the Commissioner for making that very clear. I would say that the, the problem is, is that what, communication and email is limited. He did say in there, this is the dune permit. It wasn't clear to me what was part of it and I asked to be called, left voice messages. That was just the disconnect there. I wanted a phone call because sometimes you think you're communicating something clearly and I still had questions. But nonetheless, I do appreciate the Commissioner's instructions to make sure they contact us to address these concerns. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Going, um, do you want to go ahead and do the other one or?
She's here, that's okay. I don't think there's questions, thank you.
Let's do number 12, discuss and consider the approval of large-scale dune protection permit required for the proposed single-family home at 113 Bikini Drive, Port Aransas. Since you're here, we'll get you up, Christine, so maybe you can get some other work done instead of sitting here all day.
I appreciate that. I thought maybe Scott was waiting to run in, but yes, 113 Bikini is a large-scale application. They are impacting critical dune and mitigating for, compensating for it on-site at a one-to-one ratio for both the dune volume and the square footage of dune vegetation that's impacted.
BMAC approves?
Yes, this went through several iterations at BMAC. Their concerns were addressed and then through your review. And then there were additional comments from the GLO that required more revisions from the applicant to it. So the version of the application that's attached to the agenda today has, has been revised to address all of the concerns and it's now administratively complete and per BMAC and the GLO's standards.
Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, going back to item two, discuss and consider authorizing approving execution of supplemental amendment number one to the agreement with McGriff Insurance Services for employee benefits and consulting fees. We have two different motions. We would have to appoint McGriff as a broker of record, oh, three different motions. Authorize McGriff to receive the broker's commissions and approve additional services to be performed by McGriff. And it's my understanding and through the county attorney meetings, they have already been doing these things somewhat on behalf of us. There is no one doing this. It is legal and they can do it, so...
Okay, I got big questions on this.
Go ahead.
So, why in the world are we going back to broker's commissions? We want to wait, unless I'm forgetting something, but we, we, we went away from commissions because we felt like that was self-serving and that we wouldn't necessarily get the best deal. And so we went to hiring insurance consultants on a monthly basis, i.e. Carlisle and i.e. used to be Duran and now McGriff. So unless I'm missing something, why would we want to go down a path of reopening this brokerage commissions thing? But I, and I may be not reading this right, but...
They were doing it before with someone else that we didn't have a contract with, actually. Yeah.
This was happening with Tom, Tomas Duran for an unknown amount of time where there was a person who was receiving commissions and performing some...
Well, that's not legal. Well, we didn't, we didn't authorize that.
I am unable to locate what that...
It has since stopped immediately when we questioned it, but we were not aware of it.
I need, I gotta, we need to go into legal, I think I'd like to go into legal set or executive session on this one too. This is a little messy. I, I've got some legal questions on this one too, I'm sorry, but this is, I mean, I'm not trying to stop anybody else from asking other questions, but yeah, I need, yeah. Before accusations start flying around, I'd like to know what the deal is here.
Understand.
Please.
Any other questions before that for court, for open court? Then we will move on. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of a lease with Robstown ISD for the use of the Old Show Barn, Nuones County Agricultural Center located at 900 West Avenue J. And this is an interlocal agreement. They have been using this in the past. I guess this is just updating, it was expired or something?
Yes, Judge, this item had expired. The court had agreed to this a few years back and we just never, and there was a change in, in leadership at Robstown ISD with the superintendent. And so in that time, was around the time that we should have had this agreement brought to, before their board and before the court. So we've been operating out of good faith really, but it is a liability and we want to make sure that Robstown ISD wants to kind of take full ownership considering that it is a lease, but that, that they can put more investment into it, a long-term investment, rather than have it pulled out from them out of, after a year or two. They want to put some sizable investments into it. We have put funding from my precinct funds to address roof issues, to address window issues that the elements were getting into the facility. And the Robstown Ag program, initially, they didn't have anywhere to go. So they were thankful for what they had. We made those adjustments to fix it, but they want to do more. And so all this is, is just to kind of shore it up, get it official, make it legal. We are already getting into, into, into the season, all right? The kids are already preparing for, the livestock show will be here before we know it. And so this is one way that we have been able to help, help out the community, help out the school district. They were one of the more active school districts in our county and they just didn't have a dedicated facility, so...
If that is your motion, I will second it.
This is really cool. Can I ask what they're gonna do? I mean, it's nice that...
They, they've been using it just as a facility to house the animals, basically.
What's the investment that they're gonna do is what I meant, sorry.
Oh, what's the investment? They, they haven't come back with the total dollar amount, but they have already put some. They put the large fans, that their interim superintendent a few years back, when they first came before us, mentioned about investing in the large fans that are in there. They made some, just cleanup. They put elbow grease in there, Edward. They, they, they put a lot of effort from the kids and, and the parents to fix up a facility that we, we still own, but we put no use into it, no effort to keep it clean.
So eventually, so what we did with the facility was we turned it into storage. So once they came to us, we had the exterior pens and we had the interior areas. So they, they've been paying the bills, they've been paying the water bills, they upgraded the bathrooms because it was, they had concerns in regards to the bathrooms. They've done some serious work, as Commissioner has said, to the facility to have it available for their programs. And they also support the outline existing 4H programs that are not with the city of Robstown. They're good about that, so they allow different groups of...
We're all very excited about this and very excited that they're taking the initiative.
Good to share, good job, Commissioner.
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Mottis made a motion, I seconded it, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, thank you very much. Item number four, discuss and consider approval of a renewal contract with Thomas Reuters for Westlaw, the county attorney access. This is for your office, the Westlaw?
Yes, Judge.
Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider approval of the 2024-2025 amendment to the county attorney's supplemental pay letter allocation under Department 1325, the section 460031. This is the supplemental pay you get from the state that you disperse out in your office. So I'll make the motion to pass as well. This is your money to disperse as you see fit. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. We have tabled item number six. Moving on to item number seven, discuss and consider approval of 2025 deaf and hard of hearing service agreement. This is for emergency services, the, and just a contract for next year.
Much.
I will make the motion to pass.
Second, do we have a mark, do we have a mark?
There, there's a...
I believe it's up to 50,000, but that's just a number.
That's just as needed. It's only used when we have an emergency.
The district courts use this as well as emergency management. We also made sure to get some language in there for FEMA, so when we use them during an emergency, we can get reimbursed for them.
Without this language included that was on the consent, we aren't, we don't get reimbursed for it, so we just added language and it's the same agreement.
This is just an as-measup basis though, right?
Yes.
It's one of those pre-positioned contracts kind of thing?
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'll tell you, I've, I've had several people mention about this and how important it is for segment of the community that we don't necessarily consider when it's emergency response and the judge has to go out there. It's just, people are taking the information as they go, but to have someone dedicated to be able to do that, it's so important. We see that in other events, other emergency events nationwide and they do that adequately, but the fact that we're positioning that, I think, is really important. And so I know that that was mentioned during our first run or our only run that we've found this.
Our only scare, yes.
Our only scare that we've had so far this hurricane season.
We kind of scrambled around to get that, yes.
Of course, it can happen anytime. And so we need the judge and emergency management officials to be able to communicate with all of the community, so thank you for working on this.
Absolutely. I made the motion. Did anyone second that?
Second.
Commissioner Mottis?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jag did.
Jag did? Okay, sorry. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider issuing a burn ban for all unincorporated areas of Nuones County. And what is that number today? I know last week when I checked, it was 400 something.
As of this morning, the average is 499. It's up six points from Friday. Our minimum number's been around 305, but the maximum has been 677. Those numbers are based on the daily water balance and based on the precipitation and the soil moisture. I have been in conversations with Chief Clack, who's my go-to in the, in incorporated areas for fire potential. He is also recommending a burn ban at this point because we're only gonna get drier. It's starting to move down. When the fall comes, this is when it happens, so we're...
Can we consider doing this, since we don't have a meeting between now and November, where the judge can have some discretion on this one because...
I, that's what, that's been my argument with this to begin with, because I have the authority to do it on a daily, but if we need it, whenever it comes up.
Okay, you have that already?
Yeah, we're doing it on a 60-day, but we rescind it anytime.
But it has to bring it to court to ratify, but I have the ability to call one whenever...
Or take it away?
Yes.
She can, she can recommend one for seven days, but within that seven days, you have to come in and ratify it before it can be extended beyond the seven days.
Right, so what I'm trying to say is you only have limited authority based on a limited number of days.
It has to come back to court, or I can take it.
Right, and I'm saying we should give you more, because you only have.
It's a long period.
Well, right, so.
Because of the next two months, we have one court.
When we do a burn ban, typically you can do them up to ninety days. I'm doing this for sixty, but at any time during that sixty days, the judge has the authority to rescind it at any time.
But they're saying we don't have a court within that time, because we have one court in November, one court in December.
You don't need the court to rescind it.
Okay, so where's the law on that? Because.
Oh, really?
It's in the, if you look at the proposal and you look at the burn ban, the commissioner's court or the judge has the ability to rescind the burn ban if the conditions change within that period of time. Then all I have to do is I go back and I talk to Texas A&M, I tell them that we've rescinded the burn ban, I contact my fire people in the unincorporated areas and let them know that, and we put a notice out to let the public know that there is no longer a burn ban in place.
It doesn't have to go on the court for consent, even after you've rescinded it?
And I'm just trying to find where you say that is.
If you say, if you remember the last burn ban.
No, 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 where's it in the backup? You said it was, I thought you said it was in the backup, I'm just saying, I need.
If you read the burn ban, there's a statute that we follow.
Okay, so where, can you, I don't, I don't, I don't regularly read the burn ban. Let me admit that. Can you provide the burn ban so I can see it?
I can, I can. I can't do it right now, but I will definitely.
No, I'd like it right now, because I want to make sure, no offense, but I want to, I, I like to read things when people represent to me.
I understand, Commissioner, but I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, so can you go?
So I can get it for you.
If you can just, if we can just stop on this one until you read it, because I just want to make sure, because we got a long time between. If the law says that she can rescind it, that's great, because I don't, we may need it for a week, we may need it for six months, I don't really know, but I just would like the judge to make sure she has a lot of authority.
Yes, as soon as you get it back, I'll pull you up if you go grab it, yes.
I think the one time, we, we discussed it, you know, that she can add it, but yeah, I don't take it, the court has to take it away, I think. I'm not sure, I think she can, if there's, if there comes to a point where they need it, she can, she can do it and re-ratify it.
Just go get it. We can talk to, if we don't have it in front of us, we're not gonna know what the statute says.
That's all I'm asking for, just give me the law, please, that's all I want.
We're all going back and forth on this.
Right, I don't know, I don't know the answer.
Let's just get what the law states, and we'll follow the letter of the law.
Yeah.
Moving on to item nine, then.
It will hold it.
No, we're just gonna hold.
We're holding it until she comes back. Can we do that? I'll rescind it until she comes back. I'll rescind my motion.
Rescind it.
Item number nine, do, oh, this is on the discuss and consider the allocation of the vote entitlement for Oasis County Appraisal District. We did our open, um, applications for people that wanted to be on here. We sent in three names to, um, the appraisal board, the city sent in names, the, um, school boards, the, um, Delmar, and they came back with a list of ten names. The county has seven hundred votes that we can, um, vote. I was, wanted this to be brought up, even though we're not going to do it, I want this to come back to our November, because we can either decide that we want to do a vote unanimous together to help us get a person that we all approve of, uh, on this because of the number of votes, or we can divide it up to a hundred and forty votes each, and we each pick a different person, and maybe none of our people got, I mean, it's, it's kind of something that we need to think about.
Maybe two get in there.
Yeah.
And, and who are the ones that we put forward? I'm just curi, I know we're gonna.
We, we put.
I don't, I'm sorry. We put forward, um.
Elizondo and.
No, he was, he was late.
Elizondo didn't make it, he was late. We had.
He went the other week.
Yeah.
It was mine, but he came in late.
He, he didn't turn it in until he.
So we put, I'm just, I mean, we're not doing it today, I'm just asking the question.
Gabrielle, Shirley, and was it Suzy, Suzy Sullivan? Tara's in the office, I hope you're paying attention.
It's just a question.
Those last three, I believe.
She's done.
Yes.
Judge, it's Tara.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, sorry, it's, uh, yeah, it was Gabby Hillfold, um, uh, Suzy Sullivan, and, um, God, what was the third name?
Shirley Maydo?
No.
Was it Maydo, was it Shirley?
Yes, Shirley May, yes.
Yes, the last three, yes, yeah, the three, the, the applications that we received, we turned in those three, is the applications that we received that were on time, yes. Um, so I am going to go ahead and make the motion to table to the November thirteenth. Um, I think those are really our only two choices, so I just wanted you all to see, uh, it has to be done on the thirteenth, because we are at a deadline, we have to turn these names in, and then once it goes to the appraisal, um, board, they will tally up all the votes, and those people with the most votes will be the ones that get those positions, so.
Second.
Starts January one, they will be, um, beginning, so. I have a motion and a second to bring back on November the thirteenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number ten. Oh, go ahead. Three A-ten, yes, that's not in the backup. Yes, there is backup, yeah, thank you, I thought we were fixing to have to cancel. Um, it's discuss and consider the appointment of election judges and apportionment of election judges for voting centers, PERC, and this goes on PERC Commissioner Precinct, and authorize the presiding judges to hire the designated number of clerks for Election Day in accordance with section thirty-two zero zero two, thirty-two zero three-three, thirty-two zero nine-three. Um, the percentages calculated by the Commissioner's precinct voter turnout, the Republican and the Democrat parties have reviewed this that was sent to them, and I believe, um, they're both in agreement. The thing that we would need to pass that and set a minimum and a maximum, maximum number of clerks for each. Historically, it has been two for some of the lower turnout, and we would, I would suggest a maximum as per the county clerk of six for the larger turnout, maybe deaf and hard-of-hearing, the, a lot of those places that have continual people that show up. So we need, um, to approve this and to set the minimum and the maximum. If any of you have any other suggestions, that's what's been turned in to me, so if not, I would make the motion to do that.
Question, I, I guess, who's gonna be able to answer these? I would expect the, the clerk to be here, but, because we didn't come up with this list, did we? Who came up with this list?
The parties came up with it.
Who did?
No, 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 this is a list based on, this is a list based on how your precinct is, is done.
It's not my precinct. I guarantee you won't, there's a couple on here that I see that are not in my precinct. Um, Annaville Baptist Church is precinct one, that's in, uh, that's not in my precinct, that's, that's not precinct three. It's at forty twenty-five Violet Road.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I don't know, I guess.
Me, Tara's going up to the podium, she met with him, yes, thank you.
So were you the one in charge of this, or who was?
Apparently, yeah. Um, what was, I'm sorry, what was the question, Commissioner?
How, how did you get this responsibility? Did we ask you to do it, or who?
The county clerk turned it over. She was working on it, and she gave it to us.
Yes, the apportionment hadn't been addressed in August when we did the election judges, so, um.
So is that something that we normally handle as a court? I know we typically vote to finalize, but usually it's given to us and said, here it is, we've done the work, you just review it and approve it.
Right, yes.
So that changed?
I believe that's, that's how it had been done in the past at times, it's a little bit murky sometimes, so, um, yeah.
But he's stating a, a good question on here, this, the Annaville Baptist Church is not in his precinct three, and it's on the list.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's.
So who's gonna do that list, yes?
Um, no, Commissioner, um, Commissioner Modas? Annaville Bapt, oh.
Yeah, that one's not in mine, so.
Okay, yeah, no, I can definitely.
Is there a certain number that we shouldn't have as far as vote centers?
Yeah, really, are these, then?
Um, I can go and, uh, double-check the vote centers off of, uh.
Because on quick scan.
Where did you get this list? Did you come up with it?
Yeah, this was my list. I had, um.
I thought they gave you one and you just weren't.
They gave me a, the county clerk's office provided me a list of the vote centers for Election Day. Um, I went and, um, searched the address of each vote center on the city's website, and it shows which vote precinct that, um, that address falls into, and so.
Do you have Annaville Baptist Church?
And then that particular vote precinct must have come back off of, um, my list of the breakout, but I can double-check that.
Well, we can't vote to approve this, then, if this is.
Is that the only, is that the only one that anybody?
Well, I mean, we just got the list, so it's gonna be some time to look through all of this.
Yeah, no, I had sent these, um, I sent these over to your offices last week, um, but I can, uh, I will go double-check.
These went to the Republican and Democrat parties, and it went to the county clerk as well, for everyone to look over these, and this, I didn't, I didn't even see the Annaville on yours, yes.
That might be the only.
Mistake on there.
One. Delmar College West Campus, just off the top of my head, does not necessarily, I guess it could fall in, but I don't, I think it's just on the outside edge, so there's some that are closed. Annaville Baptist, I mean, it's relatively close, I do, the area is violet, but I don't have necessarily all of Violet Road, so.
I'm not, it might be that the, um, because I was going off of where, what voting precinct it fell into, and I had a breakout of, the tax office provided me a breakout of what voting precincts fall into which commissioner precinct, so it might be that that address falls into the voting precinct, but might not necessarily be part of precinct three, if that makes sense?
Like King High School?
Yeah, it does.
Well, King definitely is in my precinct.
Oh, that makes sense.
I just have part of King District. You have part of King District, the King High School proper, the, the grounds are in my precinct.
Right.
Just like, also, like, West Oso, we share, I have, like, the junior high or the high school, and you have the other, and Commissioner has, Commissioner Gonzalez has the rest of it.
Right, so I had just been going off of the.
Delmar West is yours.
Okay, see, so Delmar West, yeah, pretty close to mine, so.
The apportionment statute had said to go off, references going off of the, the voting precinct, so that was why I had gone off of those numbers, so King High School, Annaville Baptist.
No, King's definitely in my area. Uh, we were just kind of sharing examples of where there is some split of, of the commissioner precinct.
I gotcha.
Uh, but almost certain, because it goes so far into Violet, that that's why, that caught my attention, and I just drove by there the other day for, to go to a football game at TM, and, um, there's almost no certainty that that would be in my, uh, precinct.
All right.
Because that's definitely in the Taloso area, which is Commissioner Precinct one, Commissioner Nonis area.
Yes, sir.
So.
Okay, yeah.
But other than that, that looks like that might be the only one, but I haven't looked at any of the others to see if maybe some of my areas may be in some of the other precincts.
Yes, sir. Um, no, absolutely, I can go, uh, I will double-check that and, um, double-check the others, just in case.
Check with the county clerk if she's here, too, so we all, everybody's in agreement moving forward. We don't want to vote on this to go forward if it's not, but makes a little bit more sense if it's the voting precinct more than, that's not exactly, that address is real close, but not in your precinct, so, yes.
Right, right, okay.
And West Oso, Commissioner said West Oso ISD, but it didn't say, like, you have the, junior high has a high school, so it doesn't say, but, but it's, it's a mixture, right?
Right.
Okay.
And we will bring this one back up, yes. Item number ten, thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Hawkins, you're here, if you want to come back for the, um, statute on the burn ban, whether it can be recalled without coming back to court?
Uh, yes, it's in, uh, Texas Local Government Code, Subchapter D, Outdoor Burning, uh, three fifty-two dot zero eight-one, Regulation of Outdoor Burning. In, uh, D, an order adopted under this section must specify the period during which outdoor burning is prohibited or restricted, that's why there's the sixty days. The period may not extend beyond the ninetieth day after the date the order, uh, the order is adopted. E, an order adopted under this section expires as applicable on the date. One, a determination is made under subsection B that the drought conditions no longer exist, or two, a determination is made by the commissioner's court or the county judge or a fire marshal if designated for that purpose by the commissioner's court, that the circumstances identified under subsection C two no longer exist.
Yeah, can you just make us a copy? That's all I need to see.
Okay, I can make you a copy.
Awesome, thank you.
But we do this for sixty days to give ourselves some wiggle room. If the conditions within these sixty days do change, if you give the, the judge has the ability to rescind the order. Right now, I got a.
I get phone calls, and I'm checking on that all the time, yes.
He just saw the updated KBDI, and it's now at five oh five today.
Okay.
I, I would, Judge, I would, I'd like to see that, but I would like to make the motion that we just extend this until the next, um, commissioner's court meeting for the burn ban and see where we are at that point, as we get into some, hopefully, rainy, rainy year time.
The reason we did want to suggest now is we are, we not looking only at the KBDI, but we also look at the number of fires that we have in the county. We've had several fires in the county. In fact, we're having one a week. We just had one this past weekend with the Tierra Grande at the Colonias where a structure was completely burned down.
Right, so, so I would, again, Judge, I made the motion to extend this till the ne, to burn ban until the next meeting, and then we can review it again on the November thirteenth, that would be my motion, and then, I don't see why we need to go sixty days if we have another meeting in thirty-one days. Yeah, and then, and we're going into the rainy season.
I'll second that motion, yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving, we're gonna come back to item number ten. Moving on to three A thirteen, discuss and consider authorizing and approving execution of job order authorization number zero zero three, and the amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars under job order contract agreement with, and there's a misprint in here, it is South Texas Building Partners, not Business Partners, so, and it's on the replacement of the podary value doors.
Yep, uh, the, thank you, Judge, um, the, the funds that are there, I've been there for a while, those are part, I've already updated the commissioner's family on this. Those are leftover from the insurance proceeds that were allocated to that building after Hurricane Harvey, and so we've done a good job of pinching our pennies, so we're gonna be able to get all the entrance and exit doors replaced and get new security keypad systems and whatever for staff, and it will also help me upgrade the main entry door and make it fully ADA, ADA accessible, so.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Gonzalez, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to three, oh, thank you, Scott. Moving on to 3A 14, we're receiving an update from Grant Works on the American Rescue Plan Act Projects and Deadlines. And our next meeting, November 13th, is going to be a hard deadline for that. Um, Cara, do you have an answer for us on that last thing that, did you come in for that?
I did, yeah. What is the question?
Go to the microphone, please.
All right, we're training early days, so.
I understand that. That's why, if you don't mind, Amanda, hold on one second. But there were questions on the precinct three, um, proportionment, the, uh, Annaville Baptist Church being in that group. Uh, I know we sent the list to you or Tara sent the list to y'all's office as well. Is there a way to explain that? Why?
Why what?
It's not.
I didn't do this. This is y'all's role. So I don't, I don't have an answer. I handle or, early voting. I recommend the locations. This is y'all's job.
Well.
So y'all should maybe give me an answer for this.
Well, they sent it to you.
No, I'm serious. I don't know. Like, I don't, that's not my.
Well, you, you do it normally. You gave it to us this year and we sent, I asked Tara to be sure and send this to you before it came to court because you do do this in the past, but we did it this year.
Location. So again, I don't, like, this would be something, I know she's worked really hard on it, but I don't, I'm sorry.
I thought you came in with an answer for us. If you don't, then we'll just wait till her.
I knew.
So did the law change or?
No, I mean.
I mean, normally we just get a list and then we review it and approve it. So why, why is that function now being thrown to?
It's always been.
It's, she gave us a list originally of the voting precincts. You gave us a list of the places you were going to use.
Huh?
This is just the apportionment of what is presiding judges or assistants.
So is that, is that something new or something that was done by previous courts or?
We're just really, really busy.
Remember this process.
Well, I mean, it's always kind of been a smooth process. I don't know.
Well, I think in the past, we have voted to allow you to just do it and take care of it or something and change it. This year you gave it to us and we didn't vote to give it. So in the past, we've allowed you just to take care of it.
So I haven't been.
Is why it's strange. Exactly, Commissioner.
So, I mean, so this year really it's here. Take it back.
And this was approved by the, by the parties, right?
No.
No, not yet.
Wait, what?
The number of presiding judges and that their list, their names have been approved.
They provided a list to y'all.
Yes, exactly.
And then y'all approved them, the list from the parties. And now I believe you're what?
I think Tara's back in. She may have found us an, an answer for something, yes.
So now I think you're just assigning them to the location.
Our problem is we have an assignment for precinct three and it has Annaville Baptist, which he says is not in his.
It's precinct one. Annaville Baptist is in, should be in one.
Yes.
Yeah. Cause it's right around, it's near a Hilltop.
Tara's in here. It looks like she has the answer for us. So I thought you had an answer for us, so I'm sorry.
One. That's a good answer.
I have one question on my, one on mine from Rodfield Road. And I think my borderline is Cimarron. So is Calvary Chapel of the Coastland? I think that.
Is that 125?
It's precinct four.
Um, I can, so Commissioner Mata's, uh, the address for Annaville Baptist Church falls into voting precinct 28. And voting precinct 28 falls into precinct three. Um, uh, and then I can look into that address for you, Commissioner.
Okay. Calvary Chapel of the Coastland.
Yeah, 3001 Rodfield Road. That's pretty close to me too.
Right.
That's.
That's not three. That's not precinct three.
No, no.
No.
The other one.
It's not, yeah.
Cara, if you have time before you leave, would you go over to the office with Tara and look at this, since you have done these in the past? Yes. Thank you. And come back when, thank you.
And then just to be clear, so we, would we stick with the voting precincts? Where the voting precincts technically fall into, or would you want to go by the, where the location?
Talk to her. If that's what the rule says, we're going to do with what the rule says.
Okay.
Okay?
I guarantee you like the, the, the Calvary Baptist, or sorry, what was it? Precinct two, Cal?
Cavalry Baptist, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's like right across the street from my precinct.
Uh huh.
So voting precinct wise, see, that's going to be the confusion. That's why I'm like totally confused at what's going on this year. Because why is it different? Why does it look different? Because.
I can print out the spreadsheet of the voting precincts as well, the breakout there.
Get with her so we can bring this back. This needs to be decided today, so.
You better can vote anywhere you want.
Yeah, they can vote anywhere. Yeah.
This is simply just seeing the presiding judges. Who's the presiding? Who's the alternate? Yes.
That's a big deal. So that's where we got to get that worked out. So.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, Amanda, if you want to take over, we're on item number 14. Um, receive an update from Grant Works on the American Rescue Plan Act Projects and Deadlines. I'm sorry, I thought Cara walked in with an answer to solve all our problems. Uh, we just have more questions, so we'll get back to that later.
No problem at all. Um, so yeah, we're here to talk about Artba and just give y'all a update. Um, as you guys know, we are quickly moving towards the obligation deadline at the end of this year. Um, so I wanted to talk about some options that we have.
Can I ask you a question before you go? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I do.
Don't be sorry.
So, um, and, and the, and the reason I tabled mine, one, was Judge was right. I didn't probably have it specific enough. But the other thing was, so I've got a project that when we award today is going to come in under significantly under budget, which is great, which, which will free up me to have some additional Artba funds to use in my precinct. So my, my best practices question is really, do I just leave it in that project for contingency? And does that count as being allocated? Or I, I don't know what to do with that because, and it's going to, and I, I think it's going to be a pretty significant number. So I don't want to lose those funds. So, so, but I don't know exactly how much.
That's exactly what today's thing is about, what we can do with those funds and what we can't do. Because we know there's going to be ma, multiple projects maybe similar to this.
Under or over. And, okay, so, so you're, okay, so then what do I, what do I do? I'll just.
That's these MOUs that she's going to talk to you about.
Yeah. Do you have an idea of a project that you would want to move those funds to or no idea yet?
Well, possibly, but I, I obviously want to leave something in there for contingency because things sometimes go wrong. But I don't know how that counts with the fact that we're coming up on the end of the year and what exactly to do.
Yeah.
Yes, I could shift it to a project and I'll figure that out. Since we've tabled that item, I'll figure that out between now and that November 16th meeting or 13th, whatever that date is, 13th, 16th, I don't know, 13th, and, um, figure it out. But I just, I'm trying to figure out what I, what I have to do. If I can leave it in the project and then it just, if it happens to bleed over, what, what happens? Do I just lose those funds? I mean, I don't know.
No, no.
No, yeah. So we do have some options here. Um, so we have the, um, MOU that we were going to talk through the, today. We put a draft on the agenda as backup, just so you guys could see what that would look like as an example. Um, and so that could be one option here for your situation, Commissioner, is putting those funds in an MOU. Um, the backup that I included here.
What does that mean, putting them in an MOU? I, I read the MOU, but I'm not, that's why I'm not following. So what?
Okay.
If you can give me a little more detail, I apologize. What does that mean, put it in an MOU? I mean, I read the MOU.
So, um, Treasury has released, um, sort of a flexibility measure since so many people, um, from the, um, Treasury reports. A lot of people are behind meeting this deadline. Um, so they introduced a flexibility measure. Um, is the inter-agency agreement, or otherwise known as an MOU, where you can obligate these funds. Um, you can see here in the backup, this backup is directly from Treasury. Um, so these slides are from a webinar that they did on obligations. And then, um, the bottom sheet is like a, uh, quick fact sheet that they put out. So as long as the inter-agency agreement meets these requirements as laid out on this backup, um, then they will be counted as an obligation.
Inter-agency, who would I, like, who would I have an inter-agency with? Me and who?
Yeah. So this is where it's kind of unconventional, right? But they have said you can do an inter-agency agreement with yourself, with another department. So what we are, um, recommending is that, um, you can have a couple of different MOUs. So you would have an MOU with each department of, um, that's overseeing that project.
For another project? Or, or I can either assign, so what you're saying is I can either assign it to an existing project that I, I need it for, or I can have an MOU.
With like Public Works, with Inland Parks, yes.
That's right. That's what I didn't understand from reading all this. Okay, thank you.
But there are stipulations to this. And one of the things we want to really address and push moving forward if we do these things. The, the only thing you can't do, one of the things in our other meeting, is you can't just create a new project with this. It has to be a project that has already gone out for bids. It's maybe an amendment alternate or something that we didn't have enough funding for, that it can go towards that project in the future. It can't be a new scope of work that you just pull out and the job is not obligated. So in these memorandums of understanding, if we choose to do that at our November meeting, we're going to have to have an itemized list of what we could potentially use the money for. Because if it's not in there, if it's not already been bid out where we have that, then you can't just bring up a new project. All of a sudden you want to spend it on a building over in.
So then why do the MOU? If you have to assign it to an existing project, why not just?
Contracts.
No, no, I'm saying, but, but I don't understand what the value of this MOU is then. Because i- if you have to assign it to a, an already allocated and bid out project, then you just reallocate it.
Right. So I think what Judge is talking about is the contract flexibilities, which is another, um, topic. The MOU, as long as you have a clear scope of work in the MOU and you have the funds that you are allocating towards that project, it's, it's counted as an obligation.
That's the contract, contractual obligation there, yes.
Well, but wait, so I can have a new proj, use it for a new project that I don't have it scoped out for, or I?
But for the end of the year, you just.
Right, because that's a little different. Like, so, so then I can use it for a project that has a scope of work, but it doesn't have to be bid out and contracted.
Is Anna in here? I thought we asked about that and we couldn't. That's what you told us no the other day on, yes.
Because the, because, right, or there's.
This just helped us with our contracts when we weren't able to go out for bid, as I understood.
This doesn't make any sense to have the MOU unless you can do it like Amanda says, like, I mean, which is a new project.
Commissioner, if I can give you an example, a real world example. So we're working on the jail roof over here.
Working on what?
Coating. We're working on the jail roof coating. So we're, we've looking at an engineering firm, Hanson. Hanson is, we're going to bring you the work authorization come November. We haven't, they're just looking at it right now. They're going to give us cost estimate, what it's going to cost. And we'll do the work out the reservation in November. We're going to put this on that list so that we can.
But that's already a project that we've talked about and we've approved. He's talking about a totally brand new one that, yeah.
Amanda's saying I can do a totally brand new one.
Yeah.
Yes, she is.
We were told no.
Well, I know. That's what you just said. That's what I'm saying. But the MOU wouldn't make sense to even have if you couldn't do a new project because you just allocate it to an existing one. So what you're saying is more, that makes more sense to me. And that's what I thought you were saying, but then.
It has to be in the MOU. It has to be clearly defined and it has to be before the end of the year.
That's no problem.
Uh huh. And funding allocated to it or?
Funding has to be allocated.
Yeah. So what we were talking about is leftover funds that you can only use. You're not going to lose them. Has to be on projects that are already projected.
That's for next year. Yes.
I think the key here is the money has to be already allocated for a certain project, but has no contract. So you can use those funds to continue forward to get the contract, even if it's in December or January.
Correct. Yes, this MOU would take place of a traditional contract.
But if you have no funding left over and you're just assuming I might have money, as I think what he's saying, can you put a project on that list that he would want to allocate?
Wait, wait, wait. If I have a brand new project with a scope of work that has no contract and not been allocated, I can use this for this. Right?
The allocation part, you would probably have to come to court and allocate it. Right. But yes.
Right, so.
As long as you do by November.
Right, but it's a brand new project.
You only have one more meeting to do.
Well, by December, end of the year. So by the, and I'm going to do it by November, but I'm saying by the end of the year, we could do a brand new project with that leftover money, have this MOU, as long as there's a scope of work.
In the MOU.
And tell me what the scope of work needs to be defined as. I mean, how specific does that need to be, which I'll do. I just need to know.
Very specific, yeah. Just as specific as possible. Yeah. Which we can assist with and, and we're going to draft.
I can send you a scope of work and you can say, that's not good enough or bad. Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
I have a question. Uh, yes. Are you saying that, um, all the balances, uh, like, uh, the balance of, of uncompleted projects in precinct one, I would like to bring them back to precinct one. Can I do that?
If your project comes under bid or something, is that what you're talking about?
If there's monies there.
Leftover.
Leftover. Like to have it brought back to precinct one.
Can I, can I interject a little, uh?
No.
Question, please?
Yeah. Um, I think if they have already allocated all of their money, would they be able to add a project? That's what we were talking, yes.
Yeah. That, so in essence, overallocate more funds than they have so that everything kind of falls out in the wash later.
We would not recommend that. Yeah. So the, and that kind of goes into next year, what kind of contract flexibilities you do have, which is on this backup here on, uh, page two. Um, it talks about when and where you can move that money. So if you do have a project next year that comes in under, right, so let's say, let's do a scenario real quick. So if you have a project that you obligated in an MOU, right, it's allocated, it's obligated in the MOU, you go out for bids next year and that project comes in under budget, you can then have a change order and you can move that money. So there's some.
Or the project fails and doesn't get moved forward, the same scenario, you would have the full funds.
Okay, but what if, what if next year the project comes in without an MOU? Let's say it's an existing project, like, I've got.
With a contract.
With a contract that's going to go past December.
Mm hmm.
Bob Hall Pier, London Drainage, maybe Parker Pool, already allocated, already bid, already contracted. What happens if they come in? No MOU because there's no reason to. What hap, what happens with those projects if they come in under, under value next year?
Mm hmm. So you can move that money that was obligated towards that project. You can move that to somewhere else that it's needed. You just cannot create a new project.
But, so that, that particular set of circumstances would mean I would have to allocate London Drainage or whatever, extra money to an existing project. Okay.
Exactly.
That's what I meant.
That's my, that was my question also, that, uh, my completed projects and this leftover money, I'd like to bring them back to my precinct. Is that correct? Can I do that?
You just cannot create a new project.
I'm not creating anything new.
So it'd have to be towards Hilltop or Stone Gate or something that is already contracted.
Reallocated, that's all.
Thank you.
And, and I was told in that meeting that we discussed this. It couldn't be like on my old, uh, let's say, for example, I wanted to put, use extra money for, and do shade structures or something. If it was not put out that way in the original.
Bid.
Contract bid, you cannot add something totally new to, just because you have overage and extra funds. It has to be something that you've already discussed, allocated to. The MOU has to clearly state it in the scope of work. Correct?
Correct.
That's what I was talking about, where you couldn't do things differently afterwards. Yes.
Basically, um, all funds have to be contracted, either in a MOU or a contract. So if the contract, you, you have signed and everything, it's starting to go, and maybe it goes over or something. So that's for the contingency on other contract projects, you can move it over. If it was bid less, then you can, okay, I have extra money. But you cannot create new projects. You cannot add to contracts that have already been signed. It, it has to be all contracted.
As long, as long as there's money there, I can ask you all, I want to use it for this and you can tell me yes or no, right?
We can ask, it just has to be already obligated.
Something that's already on the works.
On the works, yes.
Any, any, any of us that don't have projects in your precinct, if you have money left over and there's another project in the county, even if it's not in yours, as long as it is under contract and it is maybe short on funds, you can allocate to that project as well if you can't find a place for it in your own precinct.
But you can't expand the project.
You can't expand to a new scope in your project.
But we're also covering additives, like in the Judge's project over there at Hilltop. We had some very nice screen boards that we had to cut out of the project, but they were in their bid as part of it, but they're additives.
Anything you have on alternates or additives that have gone out for bid, that all of a sudden money comes available, we can allocate to that portion of it. It's already went out with the job.
And like in the Driscoll Building Commission, if we valued engineered it and cut stuff out that we had originally bid, then we can bring those things back that we cut out.
We'll see how much money's in there.
Yeah. All of ours. I'm afraid it's going to be the other way around, but.
And I also wanted to point out with the personnel, we would also like to do an agreement with, let's say, HR because, uh, what if, you know, the position, it has to be filled by end of this year. But let's say the person leaves, you know, in 2025 and somebody else doesn't, we don't hire somebody else. We want to be able to move those funds remaining to another project that's out.
Yes, that's why we thought there would possibly be three. And my other question is, if we allocate certain projects to Public Works, does that eliminate, uh, we couldn't do something on the, um, Inland Parks deal, or should we just add all the projects to both? How, what do we do with that on anything that we're thinking on the MOU?
So the way that we are recommending the MOUs is for them to be, um, um.
Because like the roof project, if it falls, that's 600,000. Does that eliminate anything in the Public Works projects list? Or, or would it be beneficial to put the MOU for both of them or do one that just has all three?
We could definitely have some language in the MOU to cover all of that. Um, the way that we were recommending the MOUs is for them to be department specific. So, um, just because of that's the way that you guys have split out your projects, right? So Juan manages some projects and then Edward manages some other projects. Um, so like the jail roof coating is under Edward now. So, um, that would be under his, um, Inland Parks MOU. Um, now we could add some language and we can work with Jenny on that and, you know.
But just, I just thinking, we don't want to limit ourselves, but if, if the funding can go somewhere. And, and the other strong point we put in here is also when you allocate to these departments the MOU, that, um, the list of projects under there, that still comes to court. They don't have the authority to decide what to do with that money when it comes available or something. That is still a court decision on.
Yes. Everything comes back to court.
Yes.
Absolutely. I think the important thing that we really want to highlight here is that everything must be obligated by the end of the year. Either by an MOU or a contract. So, um, that's the important thing. Yes, so close.
So positions that are not filled but are in the MOU are still protected.
Yes. At some point though, we will want to discuss those. If we can't fill them, that is a waste and we can utilize on a project that is maybe short funded or something, yes. But that's the reason we decided we needed to have HR possibly in there with positions.
Um, Edward was just asking me to give you all the example of, um, personnel. So if you have a salaried position and we can use the driver position that he just got, um, if that is an only. if that is an only ARPA-funded position and it is not going to be a permanent position, if that person was to leave with only two months left of 2026, doesn't make much sense to fill it for those last two months. So we can put in the MOU, um, some scope, um, that you can do instead of the personnel position. So, um, that, that is kind of a flexibility that we can work on in the MOU.
That was why, my, my other question, why I thought they should all be under one if there was any other language in there so that we just don't have, it's hard to fill a position for a couple of months. It's hard to fill a position. I think it's been hard to fill some for some of these offices for even two years 'cause I know it's a temporary position, it's not a full-time position. So I didn't want that sitting over there and us not being able to utilize it as well, yes.
So you can make the scope of an MOU kind of, um, an overarching goal for the department. So Jessica has a great example right now, um, with another client. By the way, my team is here, Jessica's here and Jason's here. So Jessica has a great example with, um, and I may not do a good job of explaining it, but it's with, um, a DA's office. And their overarching goal is to, um, kind of bring caseloads down. And so that is, um, their kind of MOU scope is, okay, we wanna bring caseloads down, so we're gonna do that in these different ways. So we're gonna do it with personnel and then we're gonna also do it with software if the personnel doesn't work out. So that's kind of how you can lay it out in the MOU, and she's done a great job with that, so.
So, um, do we need an action to take on this or, or just to address you all to work with the county attorney to work on these MOUs? I would, um, also strongly encourage our members up here, if you have jobs that you want to include, to get that list together for our next meeting as well. Michael, if you could on your end, get us any of the bid-out projects that had alternates or amendments or something that didn't get funded, where we have a, a list of anything quite possibly that these funds can be used on in the next two years of moving forward. Is, is, did you want something out on?
Yeah, I just wanted to also add, uh, I think Coastal Parks had some, uh, equipment that they wanted to purchase. So that's, if it's not purchased by December, it would, I would recommend having some, one of the agreements.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, because it has to be.
Any department heads that are lis, are listening, by all means, if you have something holding on in your department, we need those moving forward and they need to be on our list for the November meeting as well coming up, yes.
Edward, um, was just asking me to explain something further. So when you have, um, and this is an important point. So when you have, um, a project for personnel that goes under a very specific expenditure category, and so if you are going to, so if you have the money towards personnel, then if you move that money towards a different project for software or equipment, at that point, that would need to be moved into a different expenditure category and we would still need to make sure that that's eligible in the MOU. So we can't just throw anything at the wall and see if it sticks.
By all means, any of these projects that anyone is adding, talking about anything else, they still have to be approved and eligible and for the right category, because I know there's one category that we just, we're, um, getting up there, but we want to keep our lost revenue open for any other incidents that we quite possibly might need in the future. So make sure you talk to Grant Works or anything before
Yes, please.
Just saying this is on the list, make sure it gets approved, just like the normal process, but we have a month, let's get busy, yes.
Call me, my cell is in my email if you have any questions, um, we're extremely accessible, email us. Um, and that's our goal, is to be accessible for you guys, so please let us know if you have any questions. Jessica, Jason, did I miss anything? No? Okay, alrighty.
Any other questions, commissioners, anything? No?
Thank you very much.
I don't think there's an action that we need to do, just working to move forward. We'll see you in November.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, item number seventeen, discuss and consider giving the county judge the authority to approve payments. Thank you. We have only one meeting in November and one meeting in December. This, um, will possibly be put on the November meeting for December as well, unless y'all want to include that in this one.
Judge, I would be happy to cons, to do both meetings since there's such a gap between.
There's such a gap between the both.
I would amend my motion to include it for the month between November thirteenth and the December meeting as well.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Uh, the next item, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meeting dates, workshops, and related matters. Any changes? Nothing? Um, with this in mind, with some of our, um, ARPA stuff and contracts or things that if they come through, I know Michael's doing an excellent job in his office about getting these out, we might be forced to add a, um, one-item agenda meeting to deal with some of these contracts for ARPA, unless we get everything done in November, just a heads up. And people make a lot of traveling plans during the holidays or something, yes.
Right, so, uh, what I'll try to do to mitigate that, if possible, is if I run into a situation where, um, maybe there's value engineering that causes us not to be able to execute a contract on that November meeting that we're aiming for, um, and we have to come to the December meeting to do that, that we would wanna have language in the, in the item that allows the court to approve the award and authorize the county judge to execute that agreement for a set amount, right? And subject to review and approval by the county attorney, what that does is allows the judge to continue to work on that contract up until December 31st without having to come back to court. So we'll try to mitigate that so we don't have to have another meeting if we can help it.
Hopefully we get it all done in November, yes.
But I'll certainly be available if, if another meeting pops up.
Um, item B, grants, um, on us here still. Authorize the execution of an inter-local agreement between Oasis County and Texas A&M AgriLife Extension for the Farrahog Abatement Program that we do every year. I'll make the motion to pass. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez did, Commissioner Hernandez seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider executing a maintenance contract for fiscal year 25 statewide automatic. This is an annual one as well, victims notifications, um, and I have a docu-sign, I believe I'm supposed to sign afterwards.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Matas this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you for being here, Anna. Michael, again, C, purchasing, discuss and consider conditional select, oh, there's a lot of these, guys. Conditional selection of New Stout Excavation Group LLC for the London area regional retention bond. And, um, we do this every time for conditional selections. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And, um, this would include additive two? Correct. What I understand from Juan is there's, uh, there's some details to work out on the number of loads that get taken off the site and what the pricing would be for that. That will be worked out when we come back to execute the contract. Okay.
And here's a, yeah, an example, all these alternates, these things that are not, yes, okay. Um, I, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider conditional selection for L-I-N-E-V Systems, U.S. for digital forensic body scammer, scanner, not scammer, excuse me.
Fraud and slip there, Judge?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. And the amount on here was, uh, incorrected. Instead of 358,000, it is 398,000. Someone incorrectly put the number on there.
Make a motion, we approve with the correct amount of 398,665.
And this is all ARPA-funded, right?
Yes, this is what we allowed them to do. A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider conditional selection of casuric land improvement for Stonegate Drainage Improvement Project, and this is yours, Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes, Judge, I, I moved it, we go ahead with this project.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Judge, I would just state that the, uh, base bid amount was 364,437 dollars and additive number one is 57,500 dollars for a total of 421 dollars and nine, 937, 421,937.
Uh, on this item number three, we have a motion and a second, okay? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number four, discuss and consider conditional selection of STBP, DBA South Texas Building Partners for New Driscoll Community Center. We have a motion and a second. All, uh, any other discussion?
And this would be for the base bid amount of 1,145,000 dollars. And again, this is ARPA-funded by Commissioner, Precinct One. Precinct One, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number, um, five, discuss and consider conditional selection of designs that compute DBA visionary for Commissioners' Courtroom. And, um, this is a countywide ARPA-related funds to update our audiovisual stuff for the county.
Right, this is, uh, this is Visionality is the, the company. Um, and this was a proposal, so what will happen is, uh, this has got very, uh, complex elements going on within it. Daryl will work out those details and come back to court with the contract and an, and a final amount.
I'll make a motion to pass. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider conditional selection of progressive structures for the Animal Care Facility Center. And, um, this is.
This is to, uh, conditionally select the lowest and best bid from progressive structures. Uh, the base bid was 3,136,000 dollars. There's an alternate one for 100,000 dollars and an alternate two for 33,000 dollars. And the, uh, letter of recommendation from Shelter Planners of America supports that recommendation and Public Works, uh, recommends approval.
Does this include the whole thing, base bid and alternates?
We have the funding for all of it?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. At this point, I just want to let y'all know that's what the bid amounts were. Juan will come back with the final amounts, uh, and.
But also I'm asking, does included, the alternates are included? Or you don't know the number yet?
Doesn't know.
No, I gave you, I gave you the numbers. We know we have the base bid amount, we know we have, that's in budget, so we know that's in budget. Yes.
You wanna make the motion, Commissioner? I'll second, oh, go ahead, Commissioner. You're fine, Commissioner Hernandez seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. I think that's all.
And just wanna say thanks again to, uh, Jenny's office, uh, for all the work they do to help us get these things ready. Thanks in my office to Jason Parker, Cheryl Croxton, and Melinda Lamone. Malone, she has, uh, done a great job, uh, learning our new processes here and getting these bids out quickly, so, um, again, thanks to my staff.
Thank you.
Moving on to the auditor. Item, uh, D three, discuss and consider authorizing and approving the sole source purchase with Superioron LLC for Central Square Company for One Solution Maintenance Renewal of the One Solution Financial System for an Oasis County Auditor's Office in the amount. I, I have a question, 'cause I.
I have a question too.
Okay, go ahead, your first, you go ahead. I thought we did this last year for our annual thing, that it wouldn't come up until June, didn't we think we did it?
No, we only did six months.
We only did six months? I know we did it when we did it, we said that we could cancel at any time and they would reimburse us what we didn't use.
That's executetime.
Oh, I thought this was One Solution too.
Executetime works with One Solution. Executetime is the timekeeping and that will be the same thing and we're gonna bring that back next court.
And that was only for six months too?
No, that one's for a year and then we get the reimbursement for whenever we cancel it. This is One Solution, um, the financial system that we use. By the end of this six-month extension, we will have completed our annual financial audit for the time period that overlapped. I'm hoping that some of the ongoing, I, departments, other, um, governmental entities that are currently utilizing One Solution.
And that's why we had to continue it, so we're waiting till they're completed for this, okay.
We're waiting for ongoing investigations to.
Okay. Commissioner, you had a question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I have the same question, probably you had, Judge, but I understood that once we got, we put One Solution away, we came back, we renewed and it wasn't working, so we brought back One Solution. And I thought it was for the whole year and not, so this 62,000 dollars, is it a brand-new cost? And where's it coming from?
Okay, so, um, what happened was, again, whenever we converted to Workday, we expected to leave One Solution and convert to Workday and go 100. But, and that was the plan, that's what we had worked out with IT. We, we had processes in place to do that. And then unforeseen events took place that.
I was told that the, the stuff didn't transfer to the new system is why we've had to keep it or it should have automatically transferred to Workday.
The, the.
Let me just two questions real quick. I don't, I don't need a lot of explanation. Just, one, one solution, when we stopped using it, was money left over. When we trans, when we got, uh, uh, the new one, um, you call it, we had all this problem with it, said supposed to push the button, supposed to take care of everything, uh, the new, the new software we have right now, what is it? Workday, yeah. But, so when we worked there, we, we were having trouble, we brought back One Solution again.
No, no, we, we're, we're not in One Solution. We haven't put any new data into One Solution since 12/31 of '23. That was the last time that any new information.
So where are this 62,000 coming from?
It's just for access to our old data.
They charge us that much for access?
Where's the cost? Where's it coming from?
I had the foresight, whenever we were doing our budget, because I knew of the ongoing issues, I included it in the budget request so that we would have funding within the budget for this expense. I, I planned ahead, I, because it was reasonable to assume that the investigations would continue.
The investigation is ongoing, we have to keep it, yes.
Do you say, yeah, we planned ahead, so you put this money there?
I planned ahead, yes, sir.
Do we approve that at that time or what?
Approved it with the budget.
You approved it with the budget, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we did with the budget, that was presented, but we're, they need this information with the investigation. They're telling us they have to keep it right now.
But this money's already there, so we don't need additional monies.
Yes, there's no additional costs for it, that's correct, sir. It's already budgeted.
Okay.
There's a cost, but it's budgeted.
But it's already budgeted, yes.
All right, I just wanna make sure it's not new.
Did we make a motion?
Lisa, is there any mistakes or anything we should know about in this thing? Remember the last time you had a, uh.
The monthly financial?
A disclaimer, yeah.
Um, the, the disclaimer was added at the request of the county clerk. She wanted a sheet on the front page, but it was already on the title sheet, so we're gonna pull the disclaimer. But, um, we're going to have a new monthly financial.
That's not on this one, that's not on this item we're discussing.
That was the item that we tabled to D, or 3D1.
She's bringing back, um, to November.
Yes, that'll be back in November.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, but for this one, um, there's.
This is old information that we just don't want to lose access to.
It's all old information that we don't wanna lose access to.
And it's unfortunate that with these new processes and with these new servers and things we use, I thought it was ours to begin with and we have to pay this monthly fee to have access to our information, that we're not doing anything new on, this is old information that we just can't afford to lose.
The previous directors of IT didn't want to house the servers here and so we housed the servers in Las Vegas and this is the fee to keep the data on those servers.
I think we oughta have IT maybe show us a presentation on what the, the change would be if we housed it ourselves. With the amounts we're paying to get access to our own information is, is pretty substantial, yes. So, I mean, that's not an answer for you, I understand that's not your department, but I think that's something we do maybe need to ask Daryl about. I know he was here and it's kinda hard when he walked out the door to throw him under the bus, but, sorry, Daryl.
We, we did brainstorm all kinds of ideas on potential ways to reduce the costs for this. Um, this is actually a much lower cost than it would have been, um, because we're not adding new information.
To spend the, I make the motion to spend the 62,000 to keep access to the information that you have already budgeted coming out of the auditor's budget, yes. the information that you have already budgeted coming out of the auditor's budget, yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Is there anything else that we were supposed to bring up other than executive session stuff? I think we're still not ready on number ten. But I do have an email chain here from Friday, August the sixteenth, where these charts and this apportionment was sent to the county clerk's office for approval. I, I know I asked her to do it because she was new at doing this. I didn't want her taking over doing something. So
And it may all be right, Judge. I mean, it may be right based on what she said. I mean, depending on how we look at it. So it may all be correct. We just need to verify it.
Exactly. So moving into executive, I guess we're ready to go into executive. Item number four, executive session, public notices given that Commissioners Court may elect to go into an executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and for those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing an executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer in accordance with the authority of Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Section five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two, five five one dot zero seven three, five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven four five, five five one dot zero seven six, five five one dot zero eight six, five five one dot zero eight seven. The Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of, completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in the executive session. Today, item A, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel in regards to the Corpus Christi Palmer's Tax Abatement Agreement. Discuss and consider taking action on the same during a regular meeting and all related matters. Texas Government Code dot five five one dot zero seven one. Item B, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel regarding legal matters related to trial court cause number four seven oh four and Oasis County, Texas and Oasis County Appraisal District versus San Patricio County, Texas, and the one hundred and thirty-fifth Judicial District Court, Refugial County, Texas, and related matters. Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. Discuss, consider, and take action on regular session if needed. Item C, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, assignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the special advisor to the county librarian. Take action in open session if needed. Texas Government Code dot five five one dot zero seven four. Item three A one, we ask to bring in to executive for legal question is discuss and consider authorizing the approval of the escrow amendment conditions letter agreement between Oasis County Hospital District and Krista Spahn Health System. That I'm assuming would be five five one dot zero seven one as well.
Yes, Judge.
Item three A two is discuss and consider authorizing approving the execution of supplemental agreement number one to the agreement with McGrith Insurance Service for Employee Benefits and Consulting Services. And I'm, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one as well on that one. It is, that's all that we're bringing in, yes. It is eleven twenty-four and we are going to executive session. So we will be back in a while. Thank you. Are we ready, guys? Everybody here? Thank you. It is one forty-six and we are back from executive session. All the members are still present. I, let's go ahead and take care of the stuff we went first on item executive four C. I'd like to say Ms. Adagazza, our librarian, has run out of access to further paid leave. The court has continued her employment with the county out of respect for her long years and dedicated service. And we thank her and wish her well as she concludes her employment at this time with Oasis County is my motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Item three A one, Commissioner Chesney, I believe you have a motion.
Judge, I'd like a motion to table that to the November thirteenth meeting.
Second the motion.
And to be put on the executive session as well, please.
For both on this?
Yes.
Yes. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item three A two, Commissioner Matas, I believe you have a motion.
Yes, Judge, I have a motion to table the item to the next meeting.
I think this
December the eleventh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, December eleventh, not next meeting.
Not the next one.
Second meeting, December eleventh.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Going back to three A ten, and I believe you have the corrected versions here on the apportionment process. And Tara, y'all worked on this and the county clerk was in there and y'all decided this. Have the precinct, the Republican Party and Democrat Party, have they been notified? Are they all fine with this?
I have not, we have not reached out to the parties. I was double checking the, I did have the wrong voting precinct number assigned to Annabelle Baptist.
Okay.
So that is in precinct, yeah, that's going to be precinct one. And so it's got the revised apportionment numbers.
And there was one other correction in precinct four?
Precinct four, the Cavalry. I'm not sure why I had that one.
Took the one out from two, so it's just four, yes.
Yeah, that one was just a typo on my part. So that one is now Cavalry's going to be in Commissioner Chesney's precinct. But that does leave you guys with the, so now with the updated numbers, Commissioner Hernandez will need to change one of the locations with the Republican presiding judge to a Democrat, and I believe it TG Allen, or no, sorry, sorry, Bankette. And that Annabelle Baptist would be Republican presiding judge.
Okay. I would make the motion that Annabelle Baptist Church will be Republican.
Second that motion?
Wait, is that what you want? Is that what he needs, we do?
I mean, I don't know if you have to make motions necessarily, but just we follow your guidance as far as how they're going to be divvied up.
So you're saying he needs to change one, where the Annabelle Baptist Church now is a Republican because it was a Democrat or?
No, because he now, his numbers before, he had twenty vote centers in his precinct. And he had eight of them Republican, twelve Democrat. Now he has twenty-one and it's eight Republican, thirteen Democrat off the percentages from twenty twenty-two.
So does, don't we just need to
Accept this instead of making motions?
The whole thing?
Yeah. Approve the whole?
Only just the, I mean, you can, just the ones that moved around was, I guess.
Or you could just, what we could do is make a motion to accept the proposal as amended with the proposed
Yeah, that's a good one.
With the proposed revision.
That of each individual one.
Okay.
Yeah. That have the changes in it?
So the revisions that Tara sent, for example, Annabelle Baptist on precinct one, that one doesn't have a recommended presiding judge party as Republican or Democrat. So we would just need guidance on that for Annabelle Baptist Church. And then the same for your precinct for Cavalry Chapel.
But, but we did have it in the other one.
You want it to reflect the other one, just with the current precinct?
It was Republican in the other.
It was Republican in the other.
Okay, great.
So whatever it was.
What about, what about Bankette?
Bankette, we would change to the Democrat.
Democrat, okay. Where's that one?
It's on here and it's listed.
Bankette is, it says R now.
It's a R right now.
It says R now. Commissioner Hernandez, he needs to have eight Republican locations and thirteen Democrats. So
Oh, you're saying
So that Annabelle Baptist can be Republican.
Oh, that's why he's switching. It's not by the, okay. That makes sense then, okay.
Because I have a similar situation in my precinct, right?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that the Annabelle Baptist judge needs to be a Democrat?
No, no, no. Commissioner Hernandez is, it's, he, the, in order for the presiding judge at Annabelle Baptist to be Republican, that's going to put, to have, he would technically be at nine Republican vote centers. And the apportionment, he's only supposed to have eight. So that's why he was changing Bankette to Democrat, from Republican to Democrat, so that it follows the apportionment breakout. Does that
Do you understand?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, okay. And And then
Commissioner
Or you could do one of the other ones if you wanted to. You're just suggesting Bankette.
Right, yes.
No, Commissioner, I think Commissioner Hernandez had talked with Payton, maybe?
No, no.
And he is. Commissioner Gonzalez, you, since Cavalry was moved to precinct four, or not moved, but had been incorrectly put under precinct two, you have, you need to have six Republican presiding judges, ten Democrat. And on the list as it stands, we have, you have five Republican.
So you have to change one.
So we'll need to change one of them.
So you need to change
Second Baptist Church should be fine.
Second Baptist?
No, it's already R, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Club Estates would be fine.
Club Estates, okay.
So you want, you're changing Club Estates to R and you're changing Annabelle, I mean, Bankette to D?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
That would be amendments to the first motion that I made.
Yes, okay.
We're still
Anything on three? Let's
Yes, three.
Yes, okay.
Yes, Judge.
So precinct three, the new breakout will be four Republican locations, eleven Democrat.
So you have to change one of your Democrat precincts to a Republican, one of your locations.
And I think we said Parkway Presbyterian?
We sure did, yes, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, Parkway Presbyterian. And then Commissioner Chesney, your Cavalry was Republican before and also you only have one Democrat polling place. So it would probably have to be Republican anyway, so.
Oh, I thought Cavalry was a, an R. It was a D before?
It had been before, yes, sir. I was just saying that if it was
Oh, Delmar College came out?
No.
No, it's still in there. He's
So there's nothing I can change?
Yeah, you already have twelve and one, so you're fine.
He doesn't really have any way around.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So just the first three.
So the, I guess my motion would be the, to accept the proposed revised version with the amendments of Annabelle Baptist, I'm sorry, of Bankette becoming a D, of Club Estates becoming an R, and Parkway Presbyterian becoming an R.
That's true, yes.
That would be the motion.
Do we need to also add, or is this the time to make any modifications for the presiding judges? Or is that on the
Like the actual, who's going to serve at which, oh, the names, it's part of that agenda item, but we don't need to assign the judges.
Because I have one name that was given to me, so I wasn't sure if I needed to introduce that here or to send it to you.
I think it would have, I guess it would be included for approve, the court as a whole approves the list.
Okay, so let me add the name. It's Tadeo Bina Junior. And that would be available as a Democratic presiding judge. So since we've added some, that may be where it would be easy to swap in. And I think at least the Democrats were probably lacking on some.
Right.
So that was a name given to me. Haven't vetted. It was just shared to me. So wanted to put that out there for us and
The other thing that we will need a motion on is limiting, setting the minimum and the maximum for each of these voting locations to, I am assuming this, the smaller vote centers where they have less people, minimum being two. And I would say the maximum, really the large centers being six max or, yeah, so. Do you accept that as your amendment, Commissioner Chesney, to your motion?
Tell me that one more time.
We have to set a minimum and a maximum, setting the minimum to two judges per, or
For the election clerks.
For the election clerks, two
There's a presiding judge, alternate judge, and then they have at least two election clerks.
Two clerks, two election employees. And remember, we have to pay these people, so
I thought we already did that.
No, we didn't set
We set the compensation rate.
Yeah.
We didn't set the number of judges.
Sure.
We were told we were supposed, this was part of our action by the county clerk today that we needed this set in here.
Okay, sure. I'll accept that.
Two, to, and it was suggested two at our lower turnout places and six maximum at some of our really high turnout places. And it's the standard, it kind of sounds like, yes. So we have a motion and a second. Y'all have all that information, I think, Commissioner Gonzalez? Did you second that? Well, Brett made the motion, Commissioner Gonzalez seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. And I don't see any other actions or motions if you're here waiting on an action. We probably directed someone to contact and bring back to us. So sorry about that, but huh? We did that, we postponed, yes, to the next meeting, the thirteenth, yes. Please check me if there's anything else before I close, guys. But I think that's it. Do we have any adjournments in memory of, bless you. Anybody have any adjournments in memory?
No, ma'am.
Doesn't look like it today. So it is one fifty-seven and I will adjourn this meeting today. Thank you very much.